I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education to order. There are two closed session items on tonight's agenda. The first is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956, Section 9, Subsection D, Subsection 1. Name of case: Magali Kincaid, Vinito Juarez Neighborhood Association Neighborhood Elections Now, Juanin Igles, Catalino Flores, the Mayor's Canton versus San Juan Unified School District Complaint for Violation of the California Voting Rights Act, and in the alternative for violation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 in the California Constitution Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 3420200286475. And collective bargaining matters discussion with negotiator Jim Schumake Assistant Superintendent Schools and Labor Relations Regarding CSEA Chapter 127, General Operations Support, chauffeurs Teamsters Local Number 150 Transportation Supervisors Teachers and Certificated Supervisory Units, and regarding nonrepresented groups Management and Confidential Units Government Code Section 54957.6. Mr. Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment on the closed session agenda items at this time?
I'd be happy to, President Viasquez. If you've joined us on the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to offer a comment on either of the two items that is that are on the closed session agenda, now would be your opportunity to do so. You can, of course, do that by submitting a written comment via the form found at sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. Or if you are live on the Zoom webinar and would like to offer a live comment, you can do so now by clicking the raise hand button found at the bottom of your screen on a desktop or mobile device, or if you've dialed in by pressing at star nine on your telephone keypad.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any public comments for the closed session agenda items at this time?
I am not seeing any raised hands, though we do have two attendees, so I'll give them just another moment if they would like to raise their hand and offer a public comment.
Let's do one final check. Any public comment for closed session agenda items?
We have no raised hands, nor have we had any written comments submitted at this time for closed session items.
Okay, we will now move into closed session and we will return to open session at 6:30.
The board has now moved into closed session. They do anticipate returning to public session at approximately 6:30 PM. You are welcome to stay here on the Zoom with us or return at 6:30 PM when we will return to public session. Thank you.
I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified School District Board of Education back to order. The board is meeting in the boardroom at the district office safely, physically distanced and aligned with state and local health guidelines. Public attendance is provided via the Zoom platform as well as a live stream on the district's YouTube channel. The meeting is being audio and video recorded, and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district website. We thank you for joining us and ask for your patience as we use this format in an effort to maximize access and participation during this time of social distancing and other restrictions. Please stand for the virtual presentation of the colors by the Casa Roble Fundamental High School Air Force Junior ROTC.
Color guard, attention. Hut, hor- arms, forward, harch. Color guard, halt, ready, haste. Ready, haste, present, arms. Ladies and gentlemen, may you please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Ready, haste, forward, harch.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Paula Viasquez, Board President, and to my right is Dr. Michael McKibben, Board Vice President. To his right is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Member. To my left is Ms. Zima Creason, Board Clerk, and to her left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Member, and Superintendent Kent Kern is also in attendance. Before we begin, I'd like to review the two methods that are available to submit public comment for tonight's meeting. The first option is to submit a public comment online using the comment form located on the district website at www.sanjuan.edu/BoardMeeting. If you wish to submit a public comment on more than one agenda item, please submit a separate form for each item on which you are commenting. Comments received by 6:00 PM today have already been shared with all board members. Comments received after 6:00 PM tonight, including those submitted during the meeting, may be read during the meeting depending on time restrictions. Comments may only be submitted on an agenda item up until the time that agenda item has been discussed. The second option is on the Zoom platform where you may use the raise your hand feature. When you are called on, you may share a comment via audio during the meeting. Please note that all public comments are subject to a two-minute limit or approximately 1,500 words. With that, we are now at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for March 23rd? It's been moved by Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Dr. McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. We are at Item E1, and tonight we have one recognition for California School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day. I will turn it over to Mr. O'Apolo.
Good evening, President Viasquez, Board Members, Superintendent Kern, Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present to you Superintendent's recommendation that the governing board adopt Resolution 4A, excuse me, A402, proclaiming April 27, 2021 as School Bus Driver Day, Appreciation Day. And as you know, every day our district's bus drivers are entrusted with the safety of transporting our thousands of students to and from school. They provide invaluable services constantly that demonstrate patience and kindness, ensure that their buses are maintained and safely transport a child or children. I'd also go beyond to say this year that our bus drivers have been exceptional in our district. They not only have done what they do during the normal course of business, but during this year, they've also walked and patrolled and secured our campuses. They've reached out and helped individuals along the way. We've gotten many responses in Human Resources thanking people for acts of kindness by our bus drivers outside of driving a bus this year. So this year especially, it's a special recognition for our people who have done an outstanding job. I'm pleased to present Tom Carroll, our Director of Transportation tonight, to accept this resolution and personally thank the board for their support and our school bus drivers.
On behalf of all the school bus drivers, the mechanics, the operating technicians, the bus attendants, the supervisors, and the clerical staff that we have at transportation, thank you so much for this. It means a lot. The school bus drivers and the folks in transportation have been working very hard to make sure that everything works out in the best interest of the kids, and we really appreciate this opportunity for you to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for joining us this evening. Do any board members have comments or questions at this time? Ms. Creason?
People have heard me say this before, but maybe you haven't. My mom was a school bus driver, so school bus drivers have a very special place in my heart. Y'all start the kids' day and end the kids' day. I know I received calls from bus drivers this school year that were helping out at schools, you know, checking on kids. How are things going? I received that call as a parent, and so please relay my personal thanks. I'm very, very appreciative for all that your team does.
Thank you, Ms. Creason. Seeing any others? Want to dice? Mr. Kern?
Yeah, I just kind of want to build off of what Ms. Creason said as well. Having the opportunity to go out to schools this year, Tom, I just want to say how exciting it was to see our drivers kind of build a new relationship at the school sites with staff as they were there on a daily basis. Even at the start of the very first day back, I was at Sylvan, and one of your drivers, who had some seniority, decided to continue to work with the staff there because built a real positive rapport. And I think we saw a lot of that around throughout the district and just even the opportunity for them to interact with other members that they may not interact with. So just on behalf of myself and the rest of Cabinet, thank you as well, because it was a unique year where they stepped up and really rose to the occasion.
Thank you, Mr. Kern, and I just want to echo my appreciation. Actually, I was a little bit surprised at how emotional I got when I first saw one of the first school buses out on the road when we were starting to bring back services. And I feel like ever since then, anytime I see one of our school buses out on the streets, it's really a symbol of hope and that return. And I know, like so many of our employees, folks have really stepped up to meet the needs of our students and our communities in different ways. So I also just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. Is there a motion at this time to adopt Resolution Number A402 proclaiming April 27 as California School Bus Drivers Appreciation Day?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Creason. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. And with that, we are at Item E2, High School Student Council Reports. Tonight, we will hear from student representatives from El Camino Fundamental High School and Encina Preparatory High School. Welcome, and let's begin with Emily Wall from El Camino. Emily, please begin when you are ready.
Hello. Um, all right. President Viasquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. My name is Emily Wall, Associated Student Body President of El Camino High School. I'm so pleased to say that even after over a year of distance learning, our Eagles continue to show their pride each and every day. And to celebrate Black History Month, our student government put on a series of virtual events on our Instagram page, including polls, answering questions, providing research on some well-known black historical figures, and asking our students things such as their favorite African-American artists, actors, and influencers. I'm so happy to report that we got so much participation from our students all throughout the month of February. We invite you to follow El Camino as we continue to celebrate our students and community on our Instagram, @ECEagleSG. But on a personal note, I'm so proud to be here today telling you about all of my progressive school that recognizes the importance of shining a light on the contributions of African-Americans throughout our nation's history. My hope is that in the future years, our society will move from conversations to taking action to end racial inequities. Although El Camino had to modify our annual celebration of Mardi Gras in the month of February, we were still so proud to put together a fun-filled spirit week leading up to our virtual Mardi Gras rally that shined a spotlight on the talents of many of our students and included some fun comedy skits to brighten everyone's day. That same night, we hosted a virtual dance filled with songs picked by the students and our DJs from our student-run radio station KYDS 91.5. On the note of EC talent, we're bringing back our El Camino Talent Show. Currently, signups are still open to all Eagles until the end of the day-to-day, and our virtual talent show will be hosted on April 29. We could not be more excited to be able to continue this tradition in a virtual setting as we celebrate all of our talented students. To continue with exciting events at El Camino, we've decided to team up with Miraloma and other schools in the district to be a part of Kicks for Keeps, a shoe drive to support low-income communities internationally. We invite you to donate any new or hardly worn shoes to one of our two drop-off locations, Skip's Kitchen on El Camino Avenue or our very own El Camino High School. We are so pleased to tell you that all of our Eagles were thrilled to go back on campus to see their friends and teachers. But to celebrate, our student government at El Camino has put posters up around hallways to welcome around two-thirds of our school back on campus after over a year of distance learning. Also, I'm excited to share the news that El Camino has voted to switch to a four-by-four block schedule next year. We are so excited for this opportunity because it allows our students the chance to take more electives, have more room for more classes, and Eagles will be able to get extra help. We truly believe that it will benefit the students of El Camino and help them thrive in the future. Lastly, I'd like to take the time to thank all of you for your efforts to keep students safe and healthy. We are so happy to be on campus two days a week and are truly thrilled to move to four days a week later this month because it's beneficial to our students' mental health as well as their educational experience. Again, on behalf of El Camino, we thank you for having our well-being in mind while you are making decisions. Stay well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily, very much for joining us and for your board and for your report to the board. At this time, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Do any board members have questions or comments? Dr. McKibben? Dr. McKibben, can you turn your mic on? Perfect. Thank you.
Emily, what was the deadline for dropping off shoes?
Um, the deadline's April 30th this month.
April 30th?
Yeah, we'd be really excited if you donated.
My wife's the one who has shoes.
I love it. Any new, excuse me, any new or hardly worn shoes, we'd really appreciate. We're donating them all.
Thank you.
Emily?
Ms. Costa?
We're all focusing on the shoes, I guess, but do you need all sizes, little kids, adults? Or are you focusing just on high school-age students?
Yeah, like I said, we're donating all of them. So whatever you have, kid shoes, adult shoes, stilettos, anything like that that you have. Like I said, we're donating them to low-income families. So families include everyone. So we'd be really fortunate to have all shoes that you have laying around or that your family members have laying around, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quite the hot topic. Ms. Creason?
I had questions that were just answered about the shoe drive, so I'm excited about that, too. But I want to just first, just thank you for your leadership. Your passion and just spirit really came through in your report, and you hit on some really heavy topics. It's so great to hear from a student's perspective that Black History Month and just black awareness is moving away just from the typicals, right? Of course, we love Dr. King, but there's so much more. So I love the idea of, you know, well, who's around now, you know, and just really raising awareness beyond what we all kind of know. So I just really appreciate that and wanted to call it out. Really excited about the block schedule announcement. I knew that there was talk about that, and I'll leave it at that. And when did that decision come down? When was it official?
Um, actually, we're having a parent meeting sometime in the very near future about any questions or comments or anything like that. I'll leave that information up to our principal, Mr. Holcomb. But it was just official just very recently. So we're very excited. And as student government, I'm unfortunately sad because I'm leaving. I was really excited for that opportunity for the underclassmen, though. And I wanted to say about what you said about Black History Month earlier, I want to let all of you know that I am so proud to be representing El Camino here. And it is just not only my leadership. In these presentations I give you, I try to capture everyone's leadership at our school, whether they're in student government or not. And I'm so proud to be a part of the family and be a part of a group of leaders all throughout El Camino High School.
It takes a very special leader to give credit to those around you. So you will go far, my friend, and appreciate all that you do.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hernandez?
Can you hear me? I, Ms. Wall, I would like to know if you are able to accept adults for the talent show because my colleagues would like to nominate our esteemed Madam President in the talent show. I'm sure she, we hear she sings very well, so if that's possible, let us know, okay?
I definitely will. I'll talk and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Not sure what I inflicted upon Mr. Hernandez to get offered up for that. We'll talk, but just to spare everybody, I'm going to go ahead and politely decline any invitations to sing, that's for sure. Thank you very much for your report and for joining us tonight. And I had a question as well on the four-by-four block schedule. I just, it sounded like there was a lot of student engagement, and I'm sure that there was a pretty lengthy process, but I'm just curious if you can add just a little bit more context and flavor to what that looked like.
Yeah, so actually, what, the information that I got, it was pretty recent that it was brought to the students, but it was mostly staff engagement, for sure. The staff, from what I understand, was fond of the idea and helping the students. So I do want to share that El Camino is definitely, I mean, as you all know and as we all hope, El Camino is very wanting to help our students thrive, for sure. And from my understanding, our staff came together and truly believed that this schedule of having, for having courses in the course of a semester, as most of you know, is the four-by-four block schedule, that's the best interest of the students because there are so many pros. But it was brought to actually our student government class to talk about as well, and that was a lot of the student engagement and working with the staff on that as well.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that background. And then I'm just curious, I'm not entirely certain. Well, it's my hope that you'll be with us before the end of the year for another report, just in case. I'm curious to hear a little bit about your plans.
My personal plans?
Yeah, after graduation.
I'm actually, I am actually going to Azusa Pacific University Private School down south to study political science.
Excellent.
Very excited, very excited. And it was so nice joining all of you for so many years, or for four years, I guess.
Well, wonderful. Congratulations, and I know we all wish you luck, so thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Next up, we will hear from Angela Bernal from Encina. Angela, go ahead and take it away whenever you're ready.
Good evening, President Velazquez, members of the board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms. Cunningham. I am Angela Bernal from Encina Preparatory High School. After all this time waiting in anticipation to return to school, the time has finally come. Students who went back to in-person learning were excited to be back on campus and being able to interact with and socialize with other students and staff rather than being on a computer screen in their home. The processes seemed to run smoothly. Our counselors were great in helping students adjust to their desired cohorts and their schedules. We were glad to see older students helping new students and find their way around the school. We were also glad to see everyone taking proper precautions like wearing masks, social distancing, and regular disinfecting. The week before spring break, all cohorts were able to take their school ID picture, and everyone was pretty excited. Slowly but surely, things are starting to go back to how it used to be. As for the ones staying home, it seemed as if they nicely adjusted to the new schedule and transition smoothly. It seems as if many like the fact that school starts later than usual and are more awake in their classes. Although doing activities and trying to do events have been a challenge, we persevere and do the best we can. The week before spring break, we had a spirit week that we called Cultures of Encina, where students shared things about themselves and their culture via Instagram and comments on Google Classroom. This was a nice way to get to know about students and their traditions a little better. Our student government team is doing research to plan a multicultural event. Nothing is official yet, as we are still planning, but we are excited for this potential event. As we're getting closer to the end of the school year, seniors are also anxious to hear more about graduation. We are hoping our families will get to be with us in person. Although it will have restrictions, we are thrilled about the idea to get to experience the ceremony. Our school is currently working on the name of our new middle school. We are letting students, staff, parents, and even the community pitch in ideas of what we can call our new middle school. Although it is a part of Encina, we want to give it its own individuality. At the moment, we have over 100 named submissions. We will review these submissions with the design team and have the community provide feedback for the top pick ideas. It will then go to the District Family Committee, Senior Cabinet, and the Board for approval. We are very excited to see what the new middle school will become. As a student who has been at Encina since sixth grade up to my senior year, it was a challenge to try and accommodate middle school and high school events and activities. With this new school, I hope both schools get the chance to express their creativity a bit more freely and have more elective options like foreign language classes, home ec., and much more. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Encina Preparatory High School.
Thank you very much, Angela. At this point, I will turn it to my colleagues. Do board members have questions or comments at this time? Ms. Creason?
Just want to thank you for your report. It was really exciting to hear the different ways that Encina is celebrating culture and uplifting the many, many cultures that you have at your school. I think that it's fabulous. Also, remember, we like to attend things, so if you guys have a board member around, we like to show up. There was another thing, and I lost it. Oh, the high school, middle school bifurcation. It was really great to hear you talk about that. I know it's really important to us that there is stakeholder engagement. I love that the students are getting involved. It is your school, so I'm really excited to hear that that work is happening and that students are engaging. So thank you for your report.
Dr. McKibben?
I was, I was just going to ask Emily, what are your plans for the future?
Oh, for my future?
I'm sorry, I got the wrong name, but...
Yeah, it's fine. For my future, I mean, I'm currently unemployed, so I plan to get a job, and I'm planning on attending a community college first.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Angela. I really appreciated your report, and there was just kind of a theme that stood out to me with both your report and Emily's, particularly yours around the naming of the middle school. And it's just, we happen to have these two sites, and I'm sure it's happening more across the district, but your reflections and your appreciation for handing down something better than you had to the students that are coming next, both on the four-by-four schedule at El Camino and now on developing the middle school and like your reflections on how, you know, you had some, you had your input on kind of transitioning from middle school to high school. I just, I thought that was cool, and I wanted to say thank you very much for your involvement on the middle school piece. I also wanted to see if you had any strong opinions or like a front-runner name out of the 100 that you preferred, but I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I'll invite you to answer that if you'd like, Angela.
First, thank you so much, but I don't really have, I don't really have much of like a strong name opinion because I feel like it's better for the people like who have more, it's kind of hard to explain. I feel like more like the younger students, I feel like it's better for them to name it because they're the ones who are going to experience it.
Wonderful. And I also just wish you luck with your future plans. Community college is a fantastic way to go, and with whatever you are studying, I hope you find something that interests you and engages you and engages you and excites you, and we really, really appreciate your time. Thank you so much. We thank you both for your reports and for being here tonight. Student voice is very important to the board. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but recognize you may have a list of other things to do, so invite you to attend to those as well. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We are now at Item E3, Staff Reports, Ms. Simlich.
Good evening, President Velazquez, board members, and Superintendent Kern. This report is concerning the California Voting Rights Act. The district has received several requests recently for the Board of Education to place the California Voting Rights Act, commonly referred to as CVRA, on the Board of Education's open session agenda for discussion. However, as the district is currently in litigation regarding the CVRA, the board is not able to engage in any such discussions relating to the litigation in open session. While the board agreed to pursue trustee area elections by resolution in March 2020, the governor issued Executive Order N4820 in April 2020. the Governor issued Executive Order N 4820 in April 2020, which clarified his prior order for March 2020, that the CVRA time periods were suspended, stating that the purpose, quote, "is to protect public health and safety during the period when the state public health officer and other public health officials have determined that it is necessary to engage in physical distancing to minimize the spread of COVID-19," close quote. As of today, that order has not been rescinded, canceled, revoked, withdrawn, or expired. Concerning the CVRA litigation, in her March 22nd, 2021 order in that lawsuit, the judge wrote that, quote, "The Governor's order suspended the comparatively short timeframes in Section 10010 to protect the electorate and the community as a whole, not simply to provide the Board an unnecessary respite from plaintiff's claim. And the suspension is not left to the discretion of the Board under the Governor's order. The suspension is immediate and total, not conditional," close quote. The judge also stated that, quote, "The SJUSD and plaintiffs were not at liberty to bargain away the Governor's protection of the electorate's right to full participation and to compel them to participate remotely if they could," close quote. The district looks forward to the time when the executive order is rescinded or withdrawn so that the district can resume the CVRA process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Simlich. We are now at items E4 through E6. Mr Allen, do we have any reports from board-appointed district committees, employee organizations, or other district organizations?
We have not had any requests to speak under items E4 through E6.
Okay, we are now at item E7, and there are no closed session actions to report, so we are then at item 4, Visitor Comments. Mr Allen, will you please give instructions to those in attendance via Zoom on how they can raise their hand if they have a comment at this time?
Certainly, President Viasquez. This item is an opportunity for those individuals attending the meeting to offer comment on topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If your comment is related to an item on tonight's agenda, we would ask that you hold your comment until that item is called and public comment will be offered at that time. If you'd like to offer a comment on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda and have joined us on the Zoom environment, now would be the time to raise your hand. To do so, click the Raise Hand button found at the bottom of your screen on a mobile device or desktop Zoom client, or by pressing star nine if you've dialed into the meeting tonight.
Mr Allen, do we have any general visitor comments?
We do have five hands raised at this time, President Viasquez.
I would like to remind the public that comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen will count down the time. Under the Ralph M Brown Act, the Board is not allowed to comment on items that are on the agenda, so we are not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comment. The superintendent can refer items to staff who will follow up with you. Mr Allen, I now invite you to facilitate us through our visitor comments.
Thank you, President Viasquez. Our first comment will come from Nicole Sayers. Nicole, when you're ready.
Thank you. This is just somewhat of a question, and that is, happy to hear that the students will be back in school as of the 26th for four days. The question becomes, for the parents of students that choose to keep their students at home, is it okay for us as parents of public education to be okay with the teachers having to do a double day still with the students that stay at home? Or should the students that are staying at home, the parents that choose to keep them home, not be required to do a alternative at-home learning that might be homeschooling or elsewhere? That's all, thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our next comment will come from Kimber Rice. Kimber, when you're ready.
Good evening, my name is Kimber Rice and I have two children in San Juan. Distance learning has laid bare how inaccessible the educational system is for students like my daughter who has intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our daughter has some incredible teachers who go above and beyond to be welcoming, but have no idea how to make modifications and accommodations. Other teachers provide modified materials but have very low expectations providing limited functional content. There is clearly a lack of training and support for inclusive practices. Our case manager goes above and beyond for IEP meetings and paperwork, but is also a full-time teacher. There is clearly very little time for meaningful collaboration to make inclusive education possible. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act states that the implementation of the law has been impeded by low expectations and insufficient focus on proven methods of teaching and learning for children with disabilities. And over 50 years of research and experience has demonstrated that their education can be made more effective by having high expectations and ensure access to the gen ed curriculum in the regular classroom to the maximum extent possible. Special education is not a place, it is a service. And yet we rely on special education to create, create inclusion programs in our district rather than adopt district-wide initiatives to provide inclusive instructional practices for all students. ESSA aligned with IDEA in regards to this, and it calls out, along with every one of the California instructional frameworks, the need to utilize universal design for learning. Until classroom instructional practices are equitable, we are missing the mark for educational success. I ask the Board to explore district-wide training and support for universal design for learning as a proven method of inclusive practices for all students. Thank you for your time and all you do for our community.
And thank you for your comment. Our next comment will come from Susan Sloan. Susan, when you are ready.
I appreciate that the Board recognizes many of the employee groups over the course of a school year. And as an avid reader of Board agendas and minutes, I've not noticed that the recognition of a particular group of San Juan employees for many years. April celebrates School Library Month, and National School Librarian Day was on April 4th. So I'd like to take this time to recognize all the elementary library ICTs, the middle school library media texts, and the high school teacher librarians who rolled up their sleeves and got creative to make sure our students stayed connected in their, to their school communities, had the technology they needed to engage with their teachers and classmates, and provided essential literacy services remotely. They joined Zoom classes to read to students, teach about academic research and critical thinking skills. They organized and held tutoring services for students that needed a little extra help. They held curtside pickup opportunities for families to pick up library books, textbooks, and other learning resources, many times outside of their work hours in the late afternoon and evenings. They arranged virtual college visits for high school students, as well as provided updated local scholarship opportunities and college test prep materials. They held drive-through and virtual book fairs to engage families and encourage reading. Since there are no dedicated district funds for our libraries, they wrote funding grants to increase diverse, inclusive, and social, emotional reading resources in the school's library collections. And because they were on campus during distance learning, many took on additional roles, roles to make sure teachers were supported and students got the, got their needs met. I would like to personally thank my fellow library colleagues for quickly pivoting during distance learning by adapting their instruction and services so very professionally and to the benefit of our school families and staff. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your comment, Ms Sloan. Our next comment will come from Ben Evey. Mr Evey, when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viasquez and Board members. You know, for decades, I have heard educators lament about the lack of parental involvement in education, and I think we could all agree that this year, that's changed. Tens of thousands of people have been, wanted to engage in the process and have their voice heard on behalf of their students. And unfortunately, I think a lot of us feel like we have hit a wall. We have not seen the engagement, we have not seen the outreach, we have never seen a place where we could truly share our voice. And we've been told that non-agenda public comment for items that aren't even on the agenda is where we should speak. We've been told that we should speak for two minutes on agenda items. When we ask for items to be agendized, it's been denied. When board members have asked for items to be agendized so that there would be a public conversation, it's been denied. After the last meeting, I asked for an emergency meeting so that we could have a full and open discussion of an item of great interest. That request was denied. There have been no workshops, there have not even been a survey since August. It really is starting to feel like you don't want to hear the collective voice of parents. I know that if your labor partners were treated in the same manner, they would not stand for it. And it's just unfortunate, we've hit the point where now as parents, we have to think about how we have to collectively organize to make our voice heard in the same way because all of the channels that we thought we had seem to just not exist. It's unfortunate. And I'm, I'm sorry, we're at that point, but all we want is to be heard, that's all. And we don't want it to be emails, we want to have a conversation. Please take that into consideration as you listen to the comments from all the other parents on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment, Mr Evey. Our next comment will come from Scott Rafferty. Mr Rafferty, when you're ready.
Over the past year, I've gotten to know the plaintiffs in the Kincaid versus San Juan Unified School District fairly well. I never thought I would be in the position I am tonight of defending their honor and their decency against the President of the Board, who has, in the course of official business, written about them using obscenities, speaking about, writing about her hatred for them, and announcing that the Brown Act is stupid. She's also admitted to destroying evidence in the lawsuit, which we have only as a result of a whistleblower who has sent us documents that should have been produced and because another trustee was honest enough to maintain copies of the documents. So I really expected, we didn't expect to speak tonight, we thought that we would let, absorb the fact that you have lost the demur completely, totally, and, and enter into a discussion of settlement. We now know that Ms Velazquez will never let that happen. It's very sad that someone whom the minority community depended upon would turn against them and try to deprive their fundamental voting rights. This is, however, the face of intentional discrimination. It's no better than George Wallace, or Bull Connor, or Donald Trump. You need to allow the minority community to have an equal vote, even if it means you do not get reelected.
And thank you for your comment, Mr Rafferty. Our next comment will come from Marina. Marina, when you are ready.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. If you want your voices to be heard, please go to our Facebook page, San Juan Unified School District Parents and Teachers for In-Person Learning. We are now going forward with recalling the San Juan Unified School Board because they're not listening to us, no matter how many times we've voiced all the issues on what's been happening with our children. And if you want your voices to be heard, please go to our page. There's an email, recall sanjuanunifiedschoolboard@gmail.com. And that's just the initials, so recall, and then the initials, sanjuanunifiedschoolboard@gmail.com. Thank you.
And our next comment will come from Nicole Cardoza. When you are ready.
Thank you, Board members, for allowing me to speak today. I'm speaking on behalf of parents of students of special needs in the San Juan Unified School District, particularly those who are attending special education classes and students with IEPs. My experience over the last six weeks has been horrifyingly disappointing. After reaching out to the district to inquire when I could expect restoration of in-person IEP services for special education students, I was repeatedly put off. I was, my questions were not answered, I had to speak at a board meeting, I had board members emailing me personally to try to help me. And finally, I was told that a parent can certainly arrange to have their, their first, their services given in person, but that would be between me and the provider. This information was sent in to me as I believe that San Juan Unified School District was the provider of these services for my daughter. I was informed that this had nothing to do with special ed and that I could contact my daughter's physical therapist, speech therapist, and occupational therapist directly to schedule person, services in person. This information was not widely distributed to other parents, and I suspect that the San Juan Unified School District Special Education staff's repeated use of this tactic where they do not provide information to parents unless we ask for it directly, and even then we do not receive complete information, was continuing. I was also told that no student outside of special day classes had been receiving in-person services throughout these school closures. However, the caveat is that students have been receiving these services, they are just the students of parents who had the time and the means to file a lawsuit and be settled with the district. The unfortunate lesson I have learned and many parents should learn from this is that instead of trying to work with the Special Education Department, that I.
I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your comment, please.
No problem. I should just sue the district instead because that is the only way my daughter will receive her services, instead of trying to work with the district, because clearly that is how winners and losers are made.
And thank you for your comment, Ms Cardoza. And President Viasquez, that was our final raised hand, and we have no submitted comments to go over at this time.
Okay, with that, we are at item G, the Consent Calendar. Mr Allen, do we have any public comments for items that are on the consent calendar?
If you have joined us on Zoom and would like to offer a comment on any of the consent calendar items, now would be your opportunity to raise your hand. We have no submitted comments, and I see no raised hands at this time, President Viasquez.
Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve items G1 through G10? It's been moved by Ms Costa and seconded by Dr McKibben. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Thank you all. We are now at item I1, the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services Update. Dr Calvin.
Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the Board, Superintendent Kern, and Ms Cunningham. When a local educational agency is identified by the California Department of Education as significantly disproportionate, the LEA is required to create a comprehensive, coordinated, early intervening service plan, which is usually referred to as a CEAS plan. The development of a CEAS plan is a collaborative effort that involves a number of departments within ed services. Tonight, the Directors of Special Education, Equity, Student Support Services, and MTSS will present a CEAS update to the Board that will provide an explanation of what a CEAS plan is, the area in which we are disproportionate, our subsequent analysis, and the actions that we are taking as a district to address the root causes. Principal Allison Sloss and social worker Ruben Lozarraga will also share their firsthand experiences with this work. But first, we'll begin with Director Adolphson, who'll provide a more in-depth explanation of CEAS.
The California Department of Education has identified San Juan Unified School District as significantly disproportionate based on race or ethnicity for students with disabilities. So what does disproportionality mean? Disproportionality refers to the over-representation of a particular racial or ethnic group with special needs in one of the four areas listed, identification within a specific disability category, disciplinary action, more restrictive environments, and special education in general. Next line, please. So what are CEAS and CCAs? The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires state and local agencies to take steps to address disproportionate representation. A district has the ability to enter voluntarily into submitting a CEAS plan, which is a coordinating early intervention services, if the, the plan is where they identify one or more areas to be disproportionate. The development of a CCAS plan, which is more comprehensive, is required and is identified on how the LEA is addressing significant disproportionality and reserve at least 15% and is identified on how the LEA is addressing significant disproportionality and reserve at least 15% of IDA funds for CEASE plan. For the last three years, a CCs plan has been required by CDE for San Juan Unified School District and has been identified and required to reserve the 15% of their IDA funds for a CCs. Next slide, please. So what is the CCs plan? Our Comprehensive Coordinating Early Intervention Service Plan entails four phases to be completed by the district. The district develops a leadership team and is made up of members of cabinet, stakeholder, parent, and student groups, as well as our ed services team that are with us here tonight. The leadership team works to evaluate data to coordinate a focus group, determine root causes, and develop the CCs plan. In addition, we are required to monitor progress on goals quarterly to report to CDE during the 27-month period. Next slide, please. I apologize if the, the print is too small on the data pieces. And the data shows the ratio of African-American students with disabilities who were suspended 10 or more days out of school when compared to the number of other students with disabilities who are suspended for the same amount of time. Each year, school districts are notified of their status in January based from the previous year's school year. For example, January of 2021, the school district was notified that based on the data from the 1920 school year, we were disproportionate for suspension of African-American students with disabilities at a ratio of 3.47. This indicates that African-American students with disabilities were suspended 3.47 times more likely than other students with disabilities. Next slide, please. The following data was gathered, as mentioned prior, and shared with the leadership team when that leadership team met to develop our root causes and begin developing the plan. We did look at our California dashboard, our, how it aligned with our LCAP, as well as climate, climate survey, our suspension data. Student and staff interviews were vital in this, as well as a parent focus group. I would like to now introduce Dominic Cavelo, Director of Student Support Services, to review our suspension data.
Thank you, Vanessa, and good evening. Looking at a five-year historical trend in suspension rates provides some clarity to our disproportionality. As a reminder, our suspension rate is calculated as the number of unduplicated students suspended, receiving either a home suspension or in-school suspension divided by enrollment. This graph includes this rate for all students, both general education and special education for the groups indicated. As a note, for the 1920 school year, the suspension rate was calculated only through March due to the pandemic. While our five-year trend line clearly shows improving rates for all students in yellow, as well as for all identified student groups, it is also evident that disproportionate rates have existed for African-American students regardless of disability. Efforts to reduce our district's exclusionary discipline practices, increase our alternatives to suspension, and address this disproportionality have been significant areas of focus at all grade levels for the last several years. While progress is occurring, and African-American student suspension rates seen here in darker blue showed the greatest decreases overall, you can still see that disproportionality exists when compared to other student groups. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, districts in CCs are identified specifically to address disproportionality for our students with IEPs. This five-year historical graph of suspension rates covers the same years as the prior slide. However, the data here only includes students with IEPs within San Juan Selpa. As with the last slide, the overall trend in improving suspension rates is apparent for all students with disabilities shown here in yellow. While progress is evident, the data here again shows the gap for African-American students with IEPs, again in dark blue, when compared to other student groups with IEPs. Specifically, the rate for our African-American students with IEPs in 2015-16 was above 20%, with an overall improvement over the last few years to approximately 12%. In comparison, white students with IEPs improved from just under 9% in 2015-16 to approximately 5% last year. Next slide, please. Recent progress in reducing our disproportionality for African-American students with IEPs can be seen here. This slide covers our two most recent years of suspension data. The blue bars here show the percentage of enrollment in special education for specific groups of students, while the red bar shows the percentage of home and in-school suspensions combined that that group accounted for only within special education. Disproportionate suspensions can be seen here when a red bar exceeds a blue bar. In 2018-19, African-American, African-American students represented 11.8% of all students with IEPs. However, they accounted for 27.1% of all home and in-school suspensions for our students with disabilities. In 2019-20, while the overall population remained approximately the same, total suspensions dropped to 21.8% of all students with IEPs for our African-American students. While much of this work in this area is still needed, overall improvements in our disproportionality provides evidence that our efforts are moving us in the right direction. And to further discuss the planning process involved in our new CCs plans at this time, I would like to introduce Diana Marshall, Director of Equity and Student Achievement. Next slide.
Thank you, Dominic, and good evening, board members. After the review of the district-wide data, the team created focus groups to learn more about what the data was showing. In June, and then also again in October, we reached out to several stakeholder groups, including psychologists, vice principals, leadership teams, students, and parents. The tool that we used for the focus groups is called the Annotated Checklist for Addressing Racial/Ethnic Disproportionality, also known as the Wisconsin Survey. This survey provides three checklists that address district and school resource issues, system policies, procedures, and practices issues at the district school and classroom levels, and environmental factors to identify possible root causes of the disproportionality. These tools and the focus group, focus sessions, it was also useful in identifying, in identifying inappropriate policies and practices that may be contributing to our suspension disparities. Three themes came out of our focus surveys and, and next slide, please. And so it was the combination of both these focus groups and the review of the district data that provided us with our, our identified three root causes. So our first root cause around implicit bias and a lack of cultural awareness. Some of the focus group data suggests that our staff need to build stronger relationships with the students that they serve and that there are barriers to these relationships. And in focus groups indicated that they felt that implicit bias that the staff held towards students of color and then their unawareness of how these biases impact students' lives. So another area was that without cultural responsive strategies being used consistently, that our students of color often feel that the treatment towards them is unfair. Thus, staff and students escalating conflict, often resulting in suspensions for defiance. Around the second root cause, the lack of consistency in practices across our multi-tiered system of support, the focus groups that looked at this area specifically were the secondary vice principals, as well as the school psychologists. Some of their general themes came out as an increase for clarity around specific prevention and intervention systems. Sites need to build a comprehensive system, both behavioral and academic interventions, in that we have consistent implementation across the district around both our universal supports and our use of both behavioral and academic assessments to support early intervention. And then finally, in our lack of implementation of consistent discipline procedures, some of the themes that we heard around this is to reexamine our policies, practices, and procedures that we have around our discipline. And the focus groups also suggested that when conflict between students and staff occur, that oftentimes escalation, it often winds up in an escalated situation and then students being sent out of the classroom to the office, that there needs to be a consistent use of de-escalation techniques in combination with restorative practices to help solve these conflicts prior to a referral. And that escalated situations often result in students being removed for class and for defiance and disruption. So with those ideas of those root causes, we were then working towards a plan and with the assistance of our technical assistants, just remembering that the purpose of the CEASE plan is to prevent the inappropriate, they, as Vanessa said earlier, either identification, discipline, or placement being our, the reason for our purpose in CEASE is around the discipline. So how do we decrease, how do we prevent the disproportionality of our discipline? So some of the guidelines in determining a top, top target population and identified sites through the technical assistance is that CEASE funds are for children in those groups that are significantly over-identified or who need additional support to be successful in general education, that the focus is on prevention and that, which means that students in our top target population are nearly always general education students, that a reasonable-sized target population is determined by the capability of the LEA to provide adequate early intervening services that should result in improved outcomes. With the support, again, with the support of the technical assistance, the leadership identified that our target, target population were students with one or more days of suspension at selected sites. That gave us an initial student-focused population of 125 students. Our identified sites that we decided to focus on were those sites who, who had an African-American population of 8% or greater. The focus of the services and the CEASE budget is on these sites specifically, but yet as a system, we are doing similar work at, across all sites to help support this work. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to Christine Moran, Director of our Multi-Tier System of Support, to review the CEASE plan activities.
Thank you, Diana. I'm now going to review the activities for our 19 and 20 CEASE plan. Our measurable outcomes are all centered around reducing suspensions through a variety of activities that are aligned to our three identified root causes. This first activity focuses on aligning our CEASE activities to our eight-point commitment to educational justice and building inclusive school cultures. Listening sessions with all stakeholders at the sites will be utilized to determine the best way to support students both academically and behaviorally. Opportunities will also be offered around building collective capacity to have courageous conversations and interrupting both implicit and explicit inequities and build anti-racist, anti-bias instruction within the curriculum. Next slide, please. Our second activity focuses on the multi-tiered system of support framework and providing support to students. Our identified target students have been placed on the caseload of our Student Support Center staff and they have created student learning plans for each student to identify current levels of support as well as needed supports moving forward. We will also utilize Universal Screener to determine needs of students and continue to support the implementation of PBIS at sites. Next slide. Our third activity focuses on reduction of suspension through providing resources and training on alternatives to suspension. In addition, we will continue to support sites with PBIS and restorative practices implementation and will review suspension data monthly. Now I'd like to introduce Allison Sloss, Principal of Cameron Ranch, who will share the work that her site has been doing in these areas.
Thank you so much, Chris. I am honored to share a perspective from the field. In August, my entire staff engaged in culturally responsive professional development that was designed by the district. This was a natural extension to the work our site engaged in from the previous spring when we took a trip to the Museum of Tolerance that was supported by the Equity Department. In the fall, we personally invited African-American students in grades K through five to participate in a district focus group and additionally invited parents to share their experience in a district focus group of their own. On a site level, we met with students in grades three through five to collect data around distance learning, successes, and needs. These empathy gathering sessions were then pushed to classrooms to gather additional responses. Our site, our, excuse me, our site leadership team, in conjunction with our work in the network improvement community, held one-on-one student empathy sessions. And our liaison reached out to families to connect and gather feedback for our students with disabilities. And we offer regular family forum evenings with the support of our FACE ambassador. All findings are regularly shared with ELAC, School Site Council, and staff. As a result, we discovered trends and identified central questions to focus our work and actions. We asked, how might we increase the level of engagement versus attendance with our students? How will we connect and serve families by increasing access to resources in a timely manner? And how will we offer enrichment opportunities for all students, particularly African-American and students with disabilities? In response to our findings, we tailored our site PD to align to de-escalation and trauma-informed practices. We've leveraged site staff to offer targeted tutoring. We purchased interactive projectors for our students with disabilities and we have, which have actually are, they're amazingly have transformed teaching and learning. We funded hands-on materials for at-home use and bolstered classroom and school libraries to represent our diverse community. We continue to work with our counselors and PBIS teams to mentor identified students. And we share weekly read-alouds that align to the spirit of inclusivity and the social justice standards. We push out online digital newsletters each week with resources for our families. And we created engagement awards with the goal to recognize all students on campus as scholars. We designed a virtual enrichment club, including a STEAM Builders Club, and we continue to work as a site around the eight-point commitment to social justice through our daily actions. We are a responsive classroom site and we value the restorative process to build bridges of understanding. And finally, I would be remiss if I did not mention that this work is happening all over the district. I am speaking on behalf of the sites and the principals who are doing incredible programs and are dedicated to this work. Thank you for your time, and I would like to pass it along to Ruben Lozarraga.
Thank you, Principal Sloss. Good evening. My name is Ruben Lozarraga and I'm a school social worker in the Arden Arcade Hub. I recently developed about 15 student learning plans as part of the CEASE process, and I am happy to share out that I found the process to be both effective and meaningful. It was effective because developing the plans required a thorough review, not only of the students' histories of suspensions, but also of the interventions that were put into place as a result. The process was meaningful because not only were the majority of the students easily recognized by staff involved in the reviews, but the student records also reflected that support services were often already in place or were increased around the time of their first suspension. Beyond feeling reassured that the students I reviewed were receiving support, I was further satisfied knowing that future students in the program will also benefit from being reviewed. I'm grateful to have been a part of the development of the student learning plans because it allowed me both insight and reassurance that our support services are in fact reaching those who need the support. I will now turn it back over to Dr. Calvin for next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Sloss and Mr. Lozarraga. As we move forward, next steps will include the continued work outlined in the report, an additional layer of activities and support service, services for the summer, and a continued cycle of study and improvement until the issue of disproportionality has been fully addressed. And with that, we'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dr. Calvin and team, for the presentation. At this point, I'm going to check in with Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item?
We have not had any comments submitted for this item. If you've joined us on the Zoom call, now would be your opportunity to raise your hand to offer a comment. And we do have one raised hand at this time, President Viasquez.
Okay, Mr. Allen, if you don't mind helping us facilitate the one public commenter, that'd be great. Thank you.
Certainly. Our comment will come from Mr. Scott Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty, when you're ready.
Yes, I think it's quite remarkable that you are undergoing these efforts to make the district less discriminatory. And yet you don't recognize the significance of not having a representative on the board from the Encina community. That is essential to making these investments work. And intentional deprivation of the voting rights of that community is at the core of the discrimination in this district that was highlighted in three articles in December 2019 in the Sacramento Bee as being among the most segregated districts in the state. So we really have to look to the governance of the district to root, to eliminate discrimination root and branch. And that means a change in the electoral system, which has proved ineffective in providing a dedicated voice for this highly disadvantaged community. So it would be preposterous to expect improvements from a board which has committed itself to intentionally depriving the community of equal voting rights. Unless you have a voice on that board, all the money in the world is not going to provide equality to Encina High and Encina Middle School. Thank you very much.
And President Viasquez, that was our only raised hand on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? Ms. Creason.
Thank you for the report. Because this was an agenda item and the last comment was on an agenda item, can I speak to it? I'll leave it, I know it's touchy, and I'll leave it at this. There's a lot of assumptions in that comment, a whole lot of assumptions. This board is majority people of color, and that needs to be recognized. There's a lot to that conversation. I think that there's a lot of mutual goals that we have, and working together is a lot better than what's going down right now, and I'll leave it like that. And get back to the topic at hand. So thank you for the report. It's very appreciated. You know, this issue of the disproportionate suspensions, I'm so upset, suspensions and expulsions is not unique to SJUSD. It's not unique to kids receiving special education services. It's based on historical racism and structural issues that go back for a long time. That's the foundation, you know, at the foundation and the root. And I got to say, with all that said, I am so appreciative of Slide 12. Slide 12 is a hard thing for some people to be able to put up and say, this, these are our problems, you know, these are our problems that we need to address using the hard, real language. So I know we probably can't pull it up right now, and that's okay, but I want to really call out that the acknowledgement and not trying to hide it is how we start to move forward. Regarding Slide 8, I'm glad that we're on the right track. A question I have, though, is how much of that, this dip or decline, if any, is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and kids not being in class?
So the data was at a halt as of March of last year, but up until that point is current. Dominic, can you?
Yeah, so certainly, you know, we can't predict what it would have looked like. Certainly, there is a little bit of an inflated drop, we can assume because of the early end or the data being cut off in March. But that's why we highlighted, two slides later, on Slide 10, which does show that disproportionality having improvement from 18, 19 to 19, 20. This is regardless of that data being cut off in March because really what this is showing is this is the percentage of suspensions for students with IEPs. And these are the groups that made up those percentages within the totality of the suspensions. So we know that the disproportionality, especially for our African American students, did over the course of from 18, 19 to 19, 20, take a good, nice size decrease from one year to the next.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the slides that call out the measurable outcomes, I'm just wondering if you could share a bit about how people of color, Black folks, were included in the development of these outcomes or activities?
Diana, could you add to that, please?
In thinking our focus sessions, we specifically made sure that we invited our staff, our parents, and our students of color. I would say in our focus groups of both our students and our parents, they were, the majority were students and parents of color. And then within the leadership teams, those are already pre-identified, so we couldn't recruit specific populations. But I think we also did so when we were meeting with teachers and vice principals as well.
Thank you. Regarding Slide 13, I have to refresh my thought, apologize. I just want to note appreciation for Diana, I'm sorry, Ms. Marshall's comment on although we have these focused school sites, identified sites. She made a comment about this is something we need to do beyond these focused school sites. Black kids everywhere need support, so I'm just really happy to hear that because we know that just the way things work, it's based on how many, you know, percentages and, you know, density. But even if there's one kid in need, we need to show up for that one kid. So I just wanted to call out, I really appreciate that acknowledgement. I'm almost done. Ms. Sloss, I always love hearing from Ms. Sloss. I need to go sit in her quiet corner. I appreciated her remarks, and I just had a question. I think it's fabulous that school-wide training is happening. I think that it's really important. It's really great to hear. So often in the past, and this isn't necessarily a criticism to anyone here, just in general, the focus is so often on what the kids should do differently. So it's so good to hear what the adults in the room need to do differently. I really appreciate that. And so the question I have is, was that training required? Was it required training? And if not, what was the participation rate? And I'm sorry if that was said and I missed it.
No, I think that's actually a really good question, and it's kind of tiered. So my site has been a part of the responsive classroom experience for the last several years. So really focusing on those relationship-building components and also the inclusivity. We are a site that has ILS as well as an inclusion program. And so when I was able to take the staff to the Museum of Tolerance right before COVID happened, of course, it just strengthened the work and the commitment that we had. So that was already happening on campus. And in conjunction with that, the district, of course, felt that this was important work too, as they have all along. And as we moved into the fall, so part of your question is yes, it was work that we did in conjunction with all sites across the district. And then as we moved further, we had some choice in the extended professional development that our site wanted to engage in. And so that's where we chose, you know, to be able to engage in that work. And then it's also important to note that all of our staff, not just our teachers, but our instructional assistants and secretaries and community members were all part of this journey that we've been on. And we didn't want it to be just a PD. We wanted it to be infused in everything that we do. And so that's something that we actually talk about weekly and engage in as much as possible. So I think I answered your question, but I'm happy to clarify anything you may need.
No, you absolutely did. And thank you for the clarification. And it's so fabulous that all of our school sites, there was a required training that happened. It's tricky. I know that there's, you know, agreements in place, and it's great that we can kind of choose our own destiny and get the development where we need it. As a Black woman, I have noticed some people that need the most guidance aren't the ones that show up, you know, for that kind of training and information. So I'm really glad that this is being required, you know, that it's not optional. And then it can also be, this work is enhanced with other optional activities. And I'm sorry.
No, I was just agreeing with you. Absolutely, yes.
All right, and that's enough for me. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hernandez.
Hey there. I too just would like to concur with my colleague that, you know, it takes a big person to look at yourself and to realize what you need improvements on. And as we do that, all of us, we become better people. And I agree that to be able to look at where we are, what we need to focus on, and be able to admit it. That's a big step. I would like to congratulate our staff. And what I mean by staff, I mean everybody in this district that has agreed to either attend training, to go leave their homes and go to Southern California to visit the museum because that is away from their families in times. And I have the privilege of doing that as well. And I'm telling you, it changed the way I think. And so congratulations to everybody that we have work to do. There's no doubt about it, but we're moving forward. And so thank you to you and your staff. Dr. Calvin.
Thank you.
Dr. McKibben.
Again, I want to echo what my fellow board members have said. This is a very interesting report. It's a data-rich report. And there are some places in the data that I'd like to have some clarifications, but it is indeed, well, what Mr. Hernandez says, a good deal to think about to build on the equity efforts that we have been doing over this last year. But I want to understand some things, and I'll try to point to specific pieces and so forth. On the slide, we talk about in terms of measurable differences and so forth, and talk about five percent. And yet I look at on page 19, and the suspension count between between 2016 and 2018 went from 18% to 15.6%, which is 2.4% production. In your measurable accounts, you're asking for 5%. That percentage there is greater than 5% now. Is what you're asking for is to continue doing what we're currently doing in terms of the 5% increase?
Yes, we want to continue to improve yearly and reevaluate and make adjustments as needed. The idea is to eliminate the disproportionality.
So basically, what the data are showing is that we're doing what you want, but we need to continue doing that. Is that basically a paraphrase of what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay. That on page 22 of the report, they talk about things-
Dr. McKibben, which slide?
What?
Page 22.
No, it's not, it's not a slide. It's the page 19 of the report.
Yes.
Okay. On that, I'm sorry, page 22. In that, they talk about what is coming from the top, if you will, was not a strong message. And what I'm trying to figure out is what would, what did you mean by that comment? I'm looking back at the equity work and so forth, and the eight-point commitment seemed like a strong message. Where was the "not a strong message" coming from?
So this was input from our focus group, and I can't speak to what they were thinking when they said that. Diana, would you have any idea what the focus group was referring to when they talked about not a strong message from top down in regards to implicit?
I think the part is around timeline. Our focus groups that we did in, it was at the beginning of June, and that was before we started having our focus groups and before we came up with the San Juan Eight Point Commitment. So I think there was just a slight disconnect between our San Juan Eight Point Commitment to Educational Justice and the meeting with these focus groups. Did that help answer your question, Dr. McKibben?
Yeah, it was a little more disturbing than I thought from your answer. Okay. Moving on to page 27 of the report. At, in those data, we talked about a 93% attendance rate for African Americans. And I'm trying, and then the next sentence, I believe, it talks about African Americans are missing 50 school days. How do we get that number of missing 50 days and still have a 93% African American attendance rate? Those two data points do not seem to match.
Mr. Cavello, can you provide some clarification on that?
Yeah, it would be helpful if, Dr. McKibben, if you could give me the page number again. I'm- 27?
Yes.
It's 27 of the packet, Dominic, and it's page 17 of the CEASE.
27 of the agenda item.
Thank you. So in looking at your 93% rate of ADA, that is your average daily attendance of students who are attending on a daily basis, right? So when we look at the total number of students who may be chronically absent, chronic absenteeism is defined as anyone missing over 10% of the school year. So the sentence there that African American students are missing over 50 days of school each year may be slightly out of context as it relates to our average ADA for the district or for a group. So the 93% is still below our average ADA, which is closer to 96% for all students. So if you put that into context, you're basically talking about an additional 3% drop for African American students missing school on a daily basis. But I think the sentence there, African American students are missing over 50 days of school each year, was specific to a group of students that they were looking at related to special education. And it doesn't speak to, I think, the larger ADA piece. It's not, it's not every African American student in the district is missing on average 50 days of school.
In the report, one of the things that I was looking for, since it is focusing on suspensions and that sort of thing, the thing that came to my mind had to do with, what is the purpose of a suspension? And is the purpose of a suspension different to teachers than it is to students than it is to parents? And there wasn't anything here, but I think if indeed, and I think that may be part of the issue that we're dealing with- If, if indeed, and I think that may be part of the, part of the issue that we're dealing with is, are we dealing with a suspension as an ends or as a means? And, and is that me, is it, are suspensions doing what they have, particularly for the African American students? I know in, in the equity work we did, we talked a little bit about when someone came back from a suspension, what indeed was the, what was the consequence? And we found fairly little is the answer to that one. And yet, and that seems to be relevant to those that are on IEPs also in terms of, but that is, does not seem to be addressed in this report. And so it, it seems to be that one of the things that we need to look at is what is the purpose of the suspension? Is it different for those that are on IEP and those that aren't? And is it different for African Americans than those are? Is it different for, for young, young women versus young men? So that I think is a missing piece in this report that probably ought to be looked at if indeed we're going to close the gaps that are very apparent in this report. Thank you very much.
Ms. Costa.
I would like to echo what my colleague said about the outstanding work that's been going on. I do believe that we have a more seamless plan. We've been looking at, at this particular issue. But in the last year, we have a more seamless plan in place under all of our students. I think Dr. McKibben is. We surveyed all of our students who've been suspended. We would find that suspension probably is not something that causes kids to modify their behavior. And I think that's been true for as long as I've been an educator. But the question remains then, how do we support students to be successful in the classroom? And that's what I see in this report through the measurable outcomes and activities is finding ways for students to be successful within the classroom setting. And we know that students belonging and having a sense of adults who are caring and supportive of them makes a huge difference. So you have captured, I think, much of the work that needs to continue. And I hope that next year, as we see these numbers, we continue to see. Well, we won't have a, a report for next year because we haven't had in-person learning. So that leads me to my, I guess, the biggest question of all is. Will the state just. Consider this year as not counting in this whole process and then move forward using the 1920 data and then the data for next year, the following school year?
Right. I believe we have to pick up on last year's data, but Vanessa, can you clarify that one?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah.
Um, that is correct. We, we do have to, we received our letter in January. We will be completing a CC's 2021 plan from the data last year. And then Dominic, do you want to comment on the dashboard's recent suspension?
I'm sorry, Vanessa, in terms of this year's data thus far?
Um, Ms. Costa's question in regards to, yes. Will we be in a situation, then every January we receive a mega letter that states from CDE whether or not we have increased or decreased with our suspension rate. And so I was gonna see.
Yeah, we, we can certainly follow up on that. I don't think we have an answer for that tonight. We can follow up with Susan Green and her team to see if they've heard anything in terms of what it's going to look like for this year in terms of calculations of suspension rate and, and obviously how valid that will be. And if, in fact, it would count or if we would simply be skipping a year and utilizing the most accurate data from, from 1920. So we can follow up on that as a team and, and get back to the board with, with an answer.
Seeing no further questions or comments at this time, thank you very much to the team for the report.
President Viasquez, as we move on, I would just like to take an opportunity to remind our attendees that we do offer one public comment period per item. So for those folks who did raise their hand during the board conversation, there is another public comment period at the end of the board meeting. If you'd like to offer a comment on this item at that time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We are now at item I two, amending district graduation requirements for the class of 2021. Ms. Schnapp, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, President Viasquez, members of the board, Mr. Kern. At our March 23rd meeting, Mr. Messer presented information and data regarding the need to reduce graduation requirements. This evening, we are recommending the board adopt resolution 3045, which is attachment A, amending the district's graduation requirements for the class of 2021 to align with the minimum state requirements. If it's approved, the sites, including administrators, counselors and teachers, will work directly with the affected students and families in order to maximize the success of our, of our seniors. In attachment A, specifically the following requirements will be omitted from, from the graduation requirements. And that would be one year of English Language Arts, one quarter of Health, one semester of Social Studies elective. We will reduce all electives and any state based, any, sorry, any site based graduation requirements from sites. This would be eliminated from our requirements to meet the requirements of the state. And at this time I have, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Schnapp. First, we're gonna see if there's any public comments on this item. Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments?
We have not received any written public comments on this item. And I do have one hand raised that went up and back down, giving you one more second to just make sure. And we do not have any hands raised for this item, President Viasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And as Ms. Schnapp covered, this was originally discussed at our March 23rd meeting. So this is now before us again for action. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? Ms. Creason.
I'll be brief. Yes, we already discussed it. Really, this is just for the public. It's unfortunate that the pandemic put us in this situation. And I just want to state my position that, you know, there's no way I would ever hold a kid back for a situation that's not their fault. And, you know, SJUSD is not more mighty than the state, you know? So it's incredibly unfortunate that we had to go this route, but I do think it is the right decision to do what's best for the kids in a situation that absolutely was not their fault. And then also want to just point out, I'm very, very glad that we're going to be supported. Because beyond just graduating, we want kids to succeed afterwards, right? Beyond the grade, beyond all that. And so I'm very happy that we're going to be supporting the kids so that whatever their next thing is, they really are getting the enrichment or whatever it is that they need. The support they need to be successful in whatever the next step is. So, thank you.
Dr. McKibben.
Congratulations on, on the handoff here. That's got, picking up on another thing. What I'm trying to do is wrap my head around and kind of, I'm gonna give a summary. And I hope that you will correct me if I am wrong in my summary. And I may well be. And that is in terms of the end result of what we are proposing is that potentially a person could graduate with one year less of English. The health course, basically they do not have to have. The Social Studies elective, which is half, half a year, if you will, plus six other electives. And that's the sum total of what. Students would, in this class alone, would not need to have. Have I summarized how we got down to the state, which was, I think, 130?
Correct. So we have selected 130 for both block and traditional schools. And that does include the items that Mr. Messer listed in the board presentation. And it omits the items that are in the resolution.
And, and, and I've.
So you're correct.
That I've summarized it correctly. Okay. What would be your estimate of how many students are going to be affected by this?
We have calculated that 17% of our students can benefit from.
I think you said that last.
Yeah, so 17% will benefit from this resolution.
And in terms of on time, does that mean that these students would have, have the ability to finish these before, quote, the graduation ceremony? Or is that 17% you would anticipate? Many of them would have to do that as part of a summer school experience.
I, I think it would depend on each student's credit situation. So we're looking at extended school, credit recovery and summer school. So in different scenarios, but we are hoping to capture the majority of these students prior to June.
Prior to June.
Yeah, but this does include a fifth year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKibben. Last call. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 3045, amending the district's graduation requirements for the class of 2021 by reducing the requirements to align with the minimum state of California graduation requirements due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Costa. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Creason. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Schnapp. We are now at item I three, COVID-19 update. Superintendent Kern, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viasquez and members of the board. We will be having this ongoing item on each board agenda and able to provide kind of the latest information that we do have. And the reason why there is no backup is because normally our backup would be due to print, which would have been last Wednesday. And a good example of this week is that we just came to an agreement with some of our, one of our bargaining partners about returning to in-person learning yesterday, early in the day. We were able to make that communication that we will be returning. Combining cohorts A and B to a four day a week model, starting on the 26th, which was two weeks from yesterday. So we communicated that to staff yesterday. We will communicate that, or we communicated that with our community today. And we will continue to serve our distance learners, those students who choose to be in cohort C. We will keep them with the same staff. Well, I've spoken a number of times just about the disruption that would be with the number of students and staff that we would have to shift at this point in time of the year. So we will continue with those, those students. And to give you an idea, I think we shared some of the numbers at the last meeting as well. We are seeing more students return to in-person than some others in the region. I have a weekly Zoom every Tuesday morning with superintendents from the county and some of the other large districts who are backs. I, I don't know that all of them are, are back K-12 yet, are seeing a lower, in some situations, a significantly lower number of students return to in-person. So we will continue to watch that. And we are excited about having the opportunity to have our students return back in the, the model that we have with cohort A and B being combined. And that we've, we've threw a lot of shifts at our staff on this and we've heard from those staff as well. But, but I am appreciative of that we could get to this point so that we could bring our students back more days a week. That was, the board made that clear at the last board meeting as well. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Trent. He's going to talk to us about kind of the testing that we're doing, as well as an update on indoor sports.
So we have launched our asymptomatic testing effort for both our students and our staff. And as you might remember, the recommendations and kind of guidelines from California Department of Public Health really suggested a cadence of once every other week, when you're in that red and purple tier for your testing of students and staff. So that's what we've strived to be able to establish is access to that asymptomatic testing, again, for both students and staff on that every other week period. So right now we have on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, at least three sites on each of those days that are up and running. Those sites rotate throughout the district so that if you're on one of those rotations of every other week, you should hopefully have somewhere that does not require you to go completely across the district or even halfway across the district. There should be something semi-close to you, hopefully. So we're trying to make it as easily as we can to get tested. It is free for the person getting tested. There is no cost. All you have to do is go to sanjuan.edu/covidtesting. There's a pre-registration we ask you to do there just to save time. If you don't do it, you can do it at the site. It will just take you a little bit longer. So if you do that online before you show up, all you have to do then is show up on every other week and you can get tested absolutely free of charge. Those results go directly to you at the email or text messaging number that you provide. So we do want to encourage all of our staff and all of our students to take advantage of that. And again, once every other week is what we're asking while we're in that red and purple tier. The other thing I wanted to touch on tonight is a quick update on athletics. We are moving forward with basketball, volleyball, wrestling for our indoor sports. And what's important to know is that it does require a heavy amount of COVID-19 testing to operate these sports with the guidelines that are in place, because we basically have to follow the collegiate guidelines. So in doing that, it requires not only a regular cadence of testing, like we've been doing with our outdoor programs, but also that the tests and the results are within 48 hours of any games. So as we've collected all those schedules for those games and got those filled in, we're still fine tuning that just a little bit. We've put together that schedule and we are going to be testing those indoor athletes as well as coaches on a regular cadence with our PCR test. Those are the ones that we send away and are the very reliable and trusted ones. Not that the others are not, because we do, are going to use the antigen test when we need to, to be within that 48 hour window. And that's actually a very sweet spot for us to be in, because the PCR test allows us to not only detect current infections, but also past infections that perhaps were undetected and people didn't know about, but have already passed. It's helping us diagnose and find some of those with folks. But then the antigen test really zeros in on those folks who are currently active with an infection and making sure that we're catching those folks as well. So we do have that rigorous testing procedure going into place at all the school sites that are doing that indoor athletic program. And we are going to be allowing indoor spectators right now to start. It's going to be two individuals per household, which can go to those indoor athletic games, depending on the capacity of the facility. As the state releases, it opens up its guidance for indoor events, we will move to following that guidance. And we're in the process of moving our outdoor spectator attendance to follow the outdoor event guidance this week and next week.
Thank you, Mr. Kern and Mr. Allen, keeping up with an ever-changing landscape there for sure. I think that's the conclusion of the presentation. So, Mr. Allen, do we have any public comments on this item at this time?
I do have one hand raised at this time, President Viasquez.
Okay, we'll take public comment.
Our first comment will come from Jor Espy, when you are ready.
Okay, hopefully I'm unmuted now. So thank you all for the, the time. I just wanted to express the disappointment in the going, basically forcing children that were going two days a week to go to four days a week without really having the parental consent in that. Many of us chose two days a week so that we could get a sense for how that was going. It existed for basically one week and then boom, we're being told that now we have no choice and we have to go four days a week. You read, you, one of the things that was mentioned is we had a higher uptake of people who are going back than some of the other major districts. I suspect the flexibility that you initially offered, allowing people to come back two days a week, was one of the reasons for that. Had I known that that would only be in effect for possibly a week or two, we might not have made the decision that we made. I also know there are a number of people who are waiting to see how this would progress before deciding whether or not to have their kids go back further, who are now not going to have their kids return to school, because it's an all or nothing, four day a week, and there's no additional option. We also were under the impression that that decision would be made more at this board meeting rather than announced in advance. And, you know, I know everybody's doing their best in difficult situation, but I feel like the voices of people who were relatively okay with the situation were not heard, because we just suffer through, we do what we need to do. We were not complaining. The people who are advocating loudly, we're not necessarily the majority. And that's basically what I wanted to say. And thank you for your time.
And thank you for your comment. We do have another comment from Ben Avi. Mr. Avi, when you're ready.
Thank you, President Viasquez and board. I sent you all an email on this, but I wanted to share it here with the group. In the absence of a parent survey or workshop or any real deliberate conversation with parents, me and some other parents did get together and. me and some other parents did get together and launched a survey. Within three days, we had approximately 775 responses, 95% of which were in support of returning to full-time in-person school. And unfortunately, you know, we were not there. I would be lying if I didn't say I wasn't thankful for us returning to four-part days. But I think we are only, you know, less than halfway there and we need to keep pushing. I will note that in the email I sent you, there were 5% of the people that were not in favor of it. We did include those comments to you as well, considering about 600 of the parents did actually provide written comment in their survey results. I think a much better way to survey parents would be from the district level so that it can be comprehensive and reach all corners. We were able to get to folks in 12 different zip codes within the district, but the district would probably be more well-informed by a district outreach survey or a workshop. You have a very robust community engagement team. It's time to put them to work and hear from parents directly on this. Obviously, you know my opinion. There was another caller that had a different opinion. I think it's time to hear from all parents. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment, Mr. Avi. And President Viascas, we do have one submitted comment which reads, what is the rationale for moving to four days per week in-person learning? It seems concerning to increase the number of children in the classroom while COVID infections are still widespread in the community. And that is our last public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do any board members have questions or comments at this time? Doing a quick check. Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to comment that this whole process has been a very difficult one for everybody. And, but I, I want to commend the lengths that our district has gone to try to do the best we could, I feel, in this scenario. For example, we chose to do indoor sports. That has not been true for districts that touch us almost at every side of our district borders. So we have been able, our, our students have been able to benefit for those that play basketball, wrestling and volleyball, and not just those that play football or baseball. So, and, and it took some sacrifice in our end. As Mr. Allen mentioned, the, the, the amount of testing that had to be done for these was a choice that we made and we, we chose to make that for our students. So yes, this has not been an easy scenario for everybody, but I commend our district for the sacrifices that we felt were important for our students and also to return back to four days a week. I feel was very important for many of our parents out there that expressed their desire to have their students in the classroom as much as possible. So again, not a perfect world, but we're doing the best we can and we're moving forward. So thank you so much to everyone.
Dr. McKibben.
Mr. Kern, one of the things that the board was, was concerned with in terms of the different choices that we had was that indeed the teachers and, and their students maintained together. Am I correct that in this model of combining cohorts A and B as well as having cohort C with, with their same teacher, that the teacher, teacher record will continue to be responsible for that sort of thing? And we will avoid things like combination classes and that sort of thing in this model?
Yes.
Ms. Creason.
First, I just want to, I want to say thank you for the ongoing agenda item. I think that it's really helpful so we could have some dialogue. Couple of questions. Now that there's four days, I am pretty sure that there's going to be parents that want their kids to now switch from cohort C to in-person. Are they going to be able to do that?
We should be able to accommodate that. We've had some of those requests. We've had requests going the other way as well.
Yeah.
And we've been trying to accommodate. And, and with the space available in classrooms, we've been able to do that.
Awesome. And then I just wanted to state, and this is something I've said before, with the kids not returning, I think that there's a multiple, multitude of reasons why kids aren't returning. I know things that has affected my family and some folks that are in my circle is just the timing. Just can't make it work as a working family. And also for the kids, something that's bubbling up a lot is like, okay, do, do I want to wake up at 6:30 and go to school? Or can I wake up at 11:00 and go to school? So I think that there's a variety of reasons why people are staying and going. And so I think all of us need to keep that in mind. I want to say that I appreciate staff so much. I have said it many times and I'm going to say it again, you know, this is a workplace. Yes, you know, kids come first, 100%. But this is a huge workplace and people's work situations have ebbed and flowed and changed so drastically, so fast. And this is not easy stuff. I know I don't have it and need to be a teacher. You know, how do you manage this workload of children and adapt as needed so quickly on a dime? So I am so thankful. I do think that the change was absolutely necessary. You know, I've stated in my position, you know, as long as it's safe, I would never, ever ask any staff person or anybody to ever put themselves in an unsafe situation. I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist. And so we have to go with the guidelines, no matter which direction they're going, right? Whether they're keeping us home or they're getting us in-person more. We have a responsibility and we don't have, in my opinion, or in my belief, that we don't have the, the option to just choose that we don't want kids on campus just because, you know, we just don't have that. We have to follow the guidelines and we have a responsibility to have kids on campus for as much time as possible, again, as safe and as guidance allows. And so I'm really glad that we are doing that. I do want to say there is choice, you know, there is a choice. There's a couple of weeks still before the, the change is going to happen. So there is some time to see if it's going to work or not. There is choice to go back to distance learning, you know? If cohort C, it sounds like, I'm not, am I wrong about that? I know you kind of said.
Oh, no. Yeah, they could. Yeah.
So there is choice. We still offer, and that was something that has, I won't speak for my other board members, but something that has been very important to me is that we continue to offer choice with distance learning, in-person learning and homeschool. Because everyone has very different needs for a variety of situations. And so I'm really glad that we were able to do that. So there is a choice. No, it's not a perfect situation because pandemics are terrible and there is no perfect, perfect scenario. But I do believe that we are moving in the right direction and I'm really, really glad, really glad. I think that's enough. So thank you for the update.
One more thing I meant to share. Ms. Costa, you had asked at the last board meeting about desks and those, kind of those four-foot desks in elementary schools. Some of the logistical challenges that we actually face is even as we've been building brand-new schools in our West End, that's the furniture. We work with staff, but that's a lot of the furniture that we've been actually putting in because those four-foot desks allow for more collaboration. You push two of them together, you have a group of four. We ordered 4,000 desks, individual, single desks. That was probably shortly after the last board meeting, even before spring break. And those are slowly rolling in because we're having to replace in classrooms those, those, kind of those shared desks with individual desks in order to even space room out three feet apart. So we have some rooms that fit very easily. We have some rooms with square footage that is in the 760 range, which is small. Four schools come to my mind, Ottoman, Twin Lakes, Carriage and Trajan. All of those have smaller rooms. So when just getting 26 or 29 single desks in there really make it challenging compared to if you had them side by side, we're shoulder to shoulder. We've got some space in between. I was able to walk some classrooms with those layouts and what they look like over spring break. And Mr. Marta and his team have been doing amazing work to try and get that, those desks out to those sites so that we are ready when we return on the 26th, that we actually are abiding by the three-foot guidelines. And, and we'll be ready. So, but those desks are rolling in. It's a lot of desks to order, so, but we're happy we were able to do that.
Ms. Costa.
I just want to thank you so much. I, 4,000 desks are an incredible number to order on this short of notice. And that's the kind of commitment that I'm so proud of, our staff, that I know there were.